Other business. Board of County Commissioners to order for, let the record show, all three commissioners are present. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move to be approve the business agenda with one add on to the new business MOU between Clickatuck County and Clickatuck County Cemetery District Number One by $10,000 in community development. Project grant funding, point tax, or purchase materials as it relates to tree trimming and cemetery maintenance. We'll also say that there was a $5,000 rent match to that.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
There's a motion to second to amend the amended agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve commissioner meeting minutes for August 30th, 2022, and September 6th, 2022 as presented.
Yeah, I will second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
You might as well get them done ahead of time.
Yeah. All right, next we're going to move into citizen comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. When everybody has had their say, the commissioners will respond if they can or choose to. We will begin, as always, in the room. If you'd like to provide public comment, please come forward, give us your name, where you live, and tell us what you want to say. Come on forward.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is David McNeil, I'm from Dallasport, and I am the meetings coordinator for a newly established group assembly, deliberative assembly, that's dealing with the Dallasport wastewater treatment issue.
Okay.
And what I'm presenting today, Leo, you might as well come on up. He'll do another part of it. And I'm submitting right now, the Exhibit A is our member roster and officers. And then we have a list of eight requests for public records that I will submit all at once at the same time. Exhibit two will be read by Mr. Leo Walton.
My name's Leo Walton, and I reside at 102 Vineyard Road in Dallasport. And I've been a resident there for approximately 10 years. Before the Board of County Commissioners, this is a Dallasport Community Deliberative Assembly Notification of Intent. Whereas on the evening of August 16th, 2022, the Board of County Commissioners in a workshop session announced to the residents of Dallasport the desire and the need to arrange for the transfer of ownership of the Dallasport wastewater treatment plant. Upon satisfaction of all bonds procured for the construction of the plant beginning in 2002, completed in 2003. And whereas on the evening of August 16th, the Board of County Commissioners in said workshop session announced to the residents of Dallasport that they may enter into a negotiating pathway for sale of the Dallasport wastewater treatment plant. And whereas on the evening of August 16th, said workshop session, Commissioner David Soder, Dan Christopher, and Jake Anderson verbally agreed to allow residents of Dallasport community time to organize and enter into negotiations regarding a pathway for sale. Whereas on the evening of September 8th, 2022, Dallasport Murdoch Community Council in regular session entertained and passed two motions. The first motion establishing a steering committee, which in fact creates, created the Dallasport Community Deliberative Assembly that will deliberate in sessions, completely independent of the Dallasport Murdoch Community Council, that will report and make recommendations solely to the residents of the Dallasport community with respect to negotiating a pathway for the sale of Dallasport Water Treatment Plant. Whereas on the evening of September 8th, the Dallasport Murdoch Community Council in regular session entertained and passed a second motion for the purpose of creating a member roster and officers, submitted to the commissioners as Exhibit A. Now therefore, be it known that this document is, will suffice as notification of intent to the Board of County Commissioners and Clickatuck County by the Dallasport Community Deliberative Assembly, which is currently representing the residents of the Dallasport Peninsula, Dallasport Urban Growth Boundary Area, and Dallasport Wastewater Rate Payers for the purpose of creating a negotiating pathway for the sale of the wastewater plant. And it's signed by the two officers. To just do a little bit further background, I will read a statement that we keep on the membership roster, where, or whose purpose, our Dallasport Community Deliberative Assembly established by the September 8th, 2022 Dallasport Murdoch Community Council, whose purpose is to research alternatives available to the Dallasport Urban Growth Boundary Communities and Dallasport Wastewater Rate Payers for negotiating a path, pathway toward the sales with regards to ownership of the Dallasport wastewater treatment plant and collection system. And then to submit recommendations to said Dallasport Peninsula communities and rate payers. Thank you very much. I do have one request that our members decided that if we could make arrangements with, I assume, PUD, to get a chance to walk through the plant, see what we're looking at and talk about, we would greatly appreciate that. It'd be helpful. We have, at this point, we haven't met with our community yet, but that's the next step. Seeing as how we did the meeting with you gentlemen for the workshop session on the 16th, we've tried to implement this situation, get it all done. It started with, of course, we had to wait for the regular meeting for our community council to establish our community. And being set up, we want to make sure that we isolated ourselves from that. We are not accountable to any part of that Dallasport Murdoch Community Council furthermore, henceforth. We will deal with, our purpose is to deal with the community itself. So with that said, thank you very much for the opportunity to present this. And I'll turn this stuff over to, I'll leave the note on there. I'll turn it over to Ms. Neil.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, are you planning to stay for the rest of public comment in case if we have questions?
I'm going to stick around, yes.
Okay, great, because I'm sure there'll be questions. Okay, next up, we will go online for anybody who has public comment. Star six, to unmute yourself if you're on your phone, raise your hand, 7211.
My name is Greg Wagner with City.
Not getting.
Each citizen can do with their land.
Our speakers in the room are not working. So we cannot hear anybody speak online.
Going to listen?
How about now?
Hello?
Again, Mr. Wagner.
My three minutes.
Okay, I'll find one that works. About now, anybody?
Yeah. Close captioning is picking it up on mine.
Hello? Hello?
Okay, we're working on it, sir. I can see your text. You'll get your full three minutes, no worries, Mr. Wagner.
I did turn on subtitles, so now I can see the closed caption.
Yeah, and it is working on there, or it's picking up, it's hearing them.
They have to have subtitles.
Oh.
Yeah, all of a sudden, it's not working for me.
Technology. Works great, would have worked.
Yeah, until they want to talk.
Yeah. It's that new cars.
We building.
Anybody in the room have a comment while we press the online? No, anybody else?
Right.
And I will comment that this is a nicer place. Meeting is compared to where before, it doesn't feel so. And I can hear this better. I agree.
Is that working? Okay, are you there, Mr. Wagner?
Can you hear me?
Something over there like a speaker.
Yeah, like a speaker.
Oh, it's coming. Give me one more try. I'm going to mute every day. Not that one, hers.
Under there.
I can't hear. Wagner with C. Greg Wagner with C.
Okay, Mr. Wagner, can you hear me?
Greg Wagner with C.
One more.
The external speakers help at all?
Well, that's what I'm doing, is right here.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Wagner, are you there now?
Greg Wagner with C.
Got it, thank you, Mr. Wagner. Anytime you're ready.
Hey.
We're not hearing you, Mr. Wagner.
Can you hear me?
It isn't showing that he's talking.
Mr. Wagner?
Wagner with C.
I don't know.
Big one with C.
Would be broken up.
Greg Wagner with C.
Okay, I can hear you there, Mr. Wagner.
All right, try this again. Our county has zoning ordinances. Ordinances dictate what a person can do with their land. The ordinances are laws. If a person wants to do something different with their property than what it's zoned for, they have to get a change of use permit. They have to go through a process, then they have to get it, get it approved by the BOA and get a conditional use permit. All this comes with fees, and you have to pay county staff time, et cetera. If you want to use your land for something else, you have to have a conditional use permit. That's required by, for every citizen. I want to know why Jake Anderson can have an Airbnb and not have a conditional use permit to use his land for something it's not zoned for. If the county commissioner is going to violate the county processes and not get a conditional use permit, then no other citizen should have to get a conditional use permit. I remember a year ago May when Jake Anderson told us all to trust the process, it's enshrined. I want to know, Jake, why haven't you followed that enshrined trusted process to operate your Airbnb for the last five years? Is it all right for the county commissioner to violate the county codes, yet the citizens have to follow them? When will you start complying with the county codes? As a leader of the county, you should be setting an example. And violating the county codes is not the example a leader should be setting. You need to stop renting your place until you get the proper conditional use permit. Stop until you go through the whole procedure, the whole process. I remember on August 2nd, you said, everyone must play by the same rules. So why aren't you playing by the same rules, Jake? You need to have a conditional use permit to run your Airbnb. I'd like to know when that's going to happen. I'd also like to know, what qualifications do you three commissioners have to be the supervisor of the code compliance officer? What training have you received in the ability to dictate violations of county codes or building codes? And if you've never received any training, how can you be the supervisor of the code compliance officer? Because if he comes to you with questions, you can't provide answers. I don't believe you are the three people that ought to be his supervisors. And that, you guys made that change, and you're not qualified to be his boss. And he's having a hard time doing his job because he can't ask you anything and get an answer. It needs to go back to the building department where at least Lynn Ward is certified on building codes, unlike you three. That needs to be remedied. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Do we have more people in the room who'd like to provide public comment? I may have to switch the system up again if we'd like to. Is there anybody who'd like to provide public comment? All right, we will go back online. If you'd like to provide public comment, raise your hand, star six. Turn your video on. And we apologize for the technologically errors we've been, we had a power outage this weekend, and we've been working on it all morning. 4901.
Good afternoon, commuters, this is Sherry. Awesome. I follow up with the code compliance of Clickatuck County. As you know, the county commissioners took over overseeing this position. And now that there is a code complaint or two into the county regarding Commissioner Anderson's short-term rental not having a conditional use permit for operation, the code compliance officer has to recuse himself from his duties for conflict of interest. So since you are his bosses and possibly our Chair, Commissioner Anderson can answer this question. I hope you can, since you're his supervisor. Since he no longer can follow up on this code complaint, who in the county, what is the next process the county will take in steps of code compliance? Because if we all must play by the same rules, we all must play by the same rules. And if we must trust the process, we all must trust the process. So I'd like you to answer, what is the next step for Clickatuck County to review this code complaints that have been submitted since the code compliance officer has recused himself because of conflict of interest, since you are his boss? So I'd like that answer, please no song and dance, just give me the answer, what's the next steps in this process? What will you be doing? And also, I would like one commissioner, just one, answer, why you think Clickatuck County does not need solar ordinances? The simple question, just let me know why you think our county does not need solar ordinances? And, and again, answer the question to, what is the next steps in the process of code complaint when the code compliance officer does not do his job? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bosske. Is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment? And I think I can do it in the room. If there's anybody.
I would just mention that the two of the gentlemen that are sitting here with us is also part of our assembly, Richard Brown, Robert Brown, Dale Martin.
Thank you, sir. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment? Going once? Going twice? Last chance? Okay, would either of my seatmates like to respond to any of the public comment?
Does.
They can hear.
Need to be that mic or every mic?
Uh, right here. All right, I muted that.
So, um, I'll go with the Airbnbs and short-term rentals. Our code compliance officer does not need to recuse themselves. If one of three people is the one in question, the code compliance officer can take the case to the other two commissioners who are not involved in the case. So there does not need to be a recusal by the code compliance officer. The same thing is if I had too much trash on my property and a neighbor complained, the code compliance officer would take that to Commissioner Anderson, to Christopher Soder, at which I would not be in the room and I would not be privy. So that's how that works. Now with short-term rentals, how Ms. Bosske says everybody has to play by the same rules. That would mean every short-term rental in this county has to play by the same rules. I totally agree. And if that's the case, if they want to bring up a violation against one person, which happens to be Commissioner Anderson, now we need to also go and levy fines and shut down the other 600 short-term rentals that are operating in this county. You cannot just politically pick one person that you want to attack for a violation of code when this board and the previous board has for years not followed through on enforcement of code compliance for short-term rentals while this board works on changing that ordinance. So you say fairness, I would ask, are you asking us to shut down every short-term rental in the county? You'd also have to understand that we do receive a lodging tax from those short-term rentals. There are short-term rental owners that sit on the lodging tax advisory board that dictate tourism funds in this county. So it's a longstanding history of not enforcing the code on short-term rentals. This isn't a one-off. So again, play by the same rules for everybody, which is exactly what the county is doing. Dallasport community, thank you for being here. I would say I don't see a problem with figuring out a way to have you tour the facility, whether that's we need to talk to Public Works or something so they can escort you or work with the PUD to function that. I don't know, let us talk. That's all I have to.
Okay. Soder. I would concur with Mr. Christopher's comments as far as the conflict of interest. This is not a new thing, from time to time, we have necessarily code compliance or compliance issues with just land use decisions, things where we, you know, one commissioner may either have, there may be an accusation, or there also may have some business interest in something that they have to recuse themselves and be out of the loop. This really is no different. But yeah, I'm not sure where the idea that because there's an allegation of a complaint against one of the commissioners that the code compliance officer is recused out, is conflicted out. Again, as long as there are the other two commissioners that they, I would expect everyone to get treated the same as far as the process to move forward. If it's a, if there's a, if somebody has filed a thing, it gets processed just like everyone else's and would and has in the past. Mr. Christopher is correct, though, in that this, you know, short-term rentals as a, as a direction from the board and previous boards was we, that is not something that we have sought to regulate compliance on, just because of the sheer number and the unintended consequences of doing that. You know, technically, yes, we have, but yeah, there's five or 600 short-term rentals in Clickatuck County. You know, we have been having discussions about what that looks like as far as for the past. You know, this was raised over a year ago about updating our ordinance to, you know, just to understand that and, you know, do we want short-term rentals, not, what do we want to do about that? But at this point, I would process, at least for me, any complaint that comes in, the same as I have been doing in the past. Dallasport wastewater, again, I would, I would echo also, thanks for coming in. You guys obviously were really listening and paying attention at our, at our workshop last month. I really appreciate that you guys have taken, you know, some, some steps into staying in the conversation about it. Yeah, I agree, I don't think it should be a big deal, I think we can arrange to some kind of tour or something if folks want to go through, folk, meaning not, from a risk management perspective, it's not, the community is invited to an open house at the wastewater plant.
Right.
You know, a delegation of folks that can go back and report to the community. I think we can manage that as far as from a risk management point of view, and we'll, we'll talk to Public Works and the PUD about how we, and risk management, about how we, you get to sign off a thing that, you know, if you fall in the clarifier, good, we need a new one, so you just bought us a new. Yeah.
And I have not toured that facility yet, so if you get a tour.
There's your tour guide right there.
And I will pummel around with you because I haven't seen it and I'd like to.
Yeah, I think, I think that's. All right. It's always an interesting Tuesday. Dallasport, thank you, gentlemen, for coming, thank you for everything you're doing. Thank you for being energetic and energized for what's going on down there. I'm trying to understand, so as, as far as I understand it, Dallasport Community Council is not a 501(c)(3), so they're in essence a community group that, that has no legal standing. And you guys are putting together your own group, which is kind of the same thing, a community oriented group, but you don't, you're not under 501(c)(3), you haven't created an organization yet. You're in essence, looking into the potential for the community, and I think that is absolutely wonderful and great. I just don't want to make promises or anything of, of something that we can't keep. We will definitely answer your public records requests and open the books and everything about how it's going. And, you know, this is something that we've been dealing with for a long time. This is something we want the community invested in. We talked at the meeting, we know there's going to have to become, you know, rate increases at some point. And you guys looking into it, I think, is only going to help further that conversation with everyone on the peninsula. So thank you very much for taking your interest. Next up, short-term rentals, short-term rentals have been going on in Clickatuck County for who knows how many years. I think Airbnb might have been founded back in 2007, 2008. There's a whole bunch of different types of short-term rentals from people's yurts to people's tents to people's castles to regular permitted structures and houses and everything else. The only thing that we have on the books regarding short-term, the only thing that you can find in the Clickatuck County code is with regards to accessory dwelling units, for they are not, you're not allowed a short-term rental in accessory dwelling unit. Now, as long as you are in a house that is a permitted structure, it is still a single-family dwelling. Whether you rent your house for one night or you rent your house for three months, it's still a single-family dwelling. The code is not clear on that in nearly anywhere, which is why or areas and counties and cities actually devise ordinances with regards to short-term rentals. We have talked and discussed and had people working on coming up with a short-term rental ordinance, especially our building department, for the last year and a half. And then things like solar and budgets and everything else have gotten away. There's lots of things, oh, and fees and, you know, everything else that Sherry and Greg have brought up, that we've actually been working on diligently and making progress on when it comes to fees and everything else. Almost nowhere in Washington DC state do you see short-term rentals go through a conditional use permit. Almost nowhere in Washington DC state, do you see uh, short-term rentals go through a conditional use permit ordinance process? Because that's a very lengthy process and most all instances, it's a simple license. And that's enshrined in the ordinances and that's how it actually works. And you can go through and you can look at what the city of White Salmon did, you can look at what uh, Skamania County did. We've looked at it and will likely follow the same type of path. What it comes down to where we have to worry about these things is the county's job is to ensure public health and safety. Now, if you are having some, if you are renting your house for three months, right? The county doesn't come in and do a check to make sure that you're, you know, uh, renting your house with it comes down to public health and safety. Either you rent it for one month or one day or three months, it's all the same. Where we're going to come into the problems and we're trying to understand short-term rentals and where we've had issues is what about in a non-permitted structure where you're letting people stay? Say uh, it's a treehouse or for example, a yurt or something else that's really pretty that people want to stay at. That's not a regularly permitted structure. That's where we're going to have, that's where we've had, trying to understand how it works. Uh, we just had a code compliance violation complaint because a guy was staying on his own property in a tent. Funny, we all spend a lot of money go every year to go out camping and pay money to stay in a tent. And here we have code compliance violations because he's staying in a tent on his own property. So there's a lot of pieces to this and when it comes to saying you have to recuse yourself, I don't know where these people are saying that. But that would be the same thing as saying, if I wanted to go build a house, now my building director has to recuse themselves and my uh, building inspector has to recuse themselves because I'm technically their boss. No, that's not how it works. I'm sorry, Ms. Waske and Mr. Wagner, but that is not how the process works. I know you want to uncover every rock and do everything you can to try to um, uh, prove that we are, we, the three of us are in some way these horrible monsters in the community, but that just isn't the case. Um, so I think that's, unless there was one other comment that I'm missing, but I think that's enough for today. Again, thank you for your comments. Um, thank you uh, to the community for showing up. I look forward to working with you guys and if you have questions and need anything and answers when you're uncovering the documents, there's still a lot I need to know about that wastewater treatment plant. But if you want it today, I'll give it to you for a really good price.
Do you have a phone line? You need to have an information on what you need to say. This is a lot of answers, there's a lot of questions. And we have a correct answer. You have a name and phone number on that uh, paperwork that so Public Works can call you to set up a timeline.
I have this contact.
You have this desk. Shoot an email, I know we got the email.
Okay, and we are going to close couple of public comment, but give me 30 seconds. I have to shut this one down, turn this back on so the people can hear everyone, so we're not using the phone. And again, I apologize for the technical difficulties, so this.
Mike. I don't know if anybody can hear me, but it's closed captioning, so it must. No, not in the room. I think our speakers are dead in here, so that's.
Oh, Dave McClure gives us a thumbs up, so they can hear. Good, thank you.
Thank you, somebody for giving us a thumbs up.
Okay. Alright, I can't even see it. Okay, Mr. McClure, you have your hand up?
Of course, we can't hear him.
No, you should let me know, I could hear you.
I didn't even think about that.
Can't hear you anymore.
Hold on.
You might have to run down in the room to talk to us.
Hold on, let's see how bad this is going to get. Dave, are you there? Mr. McClure? Oh, wow. Okay, you re-lord is, I'm gonna turn it back to you.
Yeah.
Hey, at least I figured it out, got us through it.
Do something, yeah.
Okay, we're back to Zoom. Alright, we are going to move on to hard follow-up comment. Here, no schedule. Adult probation.
Oh, Courtney is back there, I didn't see, you snuck in.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Well, the department's running.
It's running.
Well. Okay, right now. We're busy as ever, um, as always. And we're doing our best with what we have. And um, numbers are still high and they're, it's hard to, hard to predict numbers. I've always kind of wondered like, is there seasons where numbers spike up and go low? And there's not really an easy answer to that because um, not everybody is placed on supervision immediately upon release from jail uh, for pre-trial monitoring uh, requirements. And sometimes those people might be put on probation once they've been convicted or found guilty. And that may be a year out. So it's really hard to kind of narrow down um, events or times of years of when our, our caseloads go up. And it's just historically just kind of been a roller coaster. There's, there's times of the months or of the years where it's kind of like, okay, we can breathe a little bit. We can get caught up and do some, you know, reading on statutes and get educated on um, other things that probation departments are doing around the state. Um, but it doesn't always, you can't predict that. So um, what I've seen is that um, holidays um, tend to be uh, an uptick, uptick in um, crimes. Um, just because I think people uh, naturally uh, don't always cope well with family or arguments. And so they tend to drink or use other substances to kind of manage their feelings. And that never ends well, so. But that's my personal opinion. From my experience. Okay, so depart.
Can I interrupt you real quick?
Yeah.
I've seen a drop in probation and if so, what percent would you change?
I have not seen a drop in probation cases. In fact, it probably has risen. So um, now crim, now criminal cases like felony controlled substance possession charges, those have kind of gone away because it's no longer a crime. But I got thefts, I got a lot of criminal trespass, I got thefts. Um, that happens quite often, especially at our grocery stores around in the communities. Um, they're buying, they're stealing, you know, uh, drinks or alcohol or who knows what. Um, and that's usually to support their habit. Yes. Um, and in addition, they think, tend to think like, oh, well now it's legal in the state of Washington, so I can use them. Nope, no you can't, it's not legal for you because you're on probation. You, those, those requirements have been taken away for the meantime, so.
Yeah, I don't think, and shoplifting was still illegal.
Correct, yeah, we just see the crimes differently.
Except maybe in California, yeah.
Um. We have been, we're still working on transferring the data from the old system to the new system. Uh, we just worked out um, a process this morning about um, because we have most of the active, our people that are currently being seen transferred into our new system. Uh, the older um, cases that are still in that system, we're kind of separating cases to individually get those inputted um, as we have time. So it's kind of a low priority um, to other things in our, in our day-to-day schedule. But the system seems to be working out just fine. We haven't had any issues with it. Uh, it's just trying to figure out like the reporting system and the counting system with that, just because it looks different. Um, our MRT programs, uh, we still are doing the DVMRT uh, once a week and the coping with anger once a week. Uh, I just, I think I have four, three or four newcomers from uh, Spokane. No, sorry, two from Spokane, one who's currently in Arizona, who um, joins the group virtually uh, for a case from King County. So we're getting a lot of out-of-county referrals, which is kind of nice. Um, we just had a graduate last week. And the coping with anger group is got, I believe, four in that, in attendance. Uh, and we have a couple of those uh, individuals that are currently in the group that are just voluntary citizens that have just joined. So, wonderful. And I wish I had time to have read it in the email this morning. There just was a studies put out by the state uh, gender inequality group on the DVMRT showing that it's, it is successful. It has good recidivism rates, they're, they're low. Um, and it's, it's a good resource, so I'm happy to be a part of that. Not only is that a good benefit for the community but, and our citizens, but it's a good benefit for C and I. Well, we see a lot of negatives in our day-to-day and that can be an easy burnout. Um, so it's really good to have a group where we can go to once a week and see a lot of growth and positivity. Um, it makes us feel like, okay, we're, reminds us why we're doing the job. And uh, last but not least, um, resources. I've been in conversations with public health director, I've been in conversations with um, KVH and Comprehensive, Comprehensive is now down to one sud council, drug and alcohol counselor and one office staff. They just lost their nurse practitioner that divvies out the medications for their mental health clients at Comprehensive. So that's a huge concern um, for the community because now where are these individuals getting their, their antipsychotic medications at? So I hope that they are asking the, those patients to um, contact their preferred care providers, their doctors and, and getting, continuing those medications.
Asking a question, you might know the answer and you might have forgotten to ask. Um, got contacted by a citizen in the community that has a relative that needs uh, drug and alcohol care. Uh, they contacted Comprehensive and apparently according to them, they were told by Comprehensive that Comprehensive is no longer doing drug and alcohol uh, counseling or whatnot in this county that they're giving up all of those services. And I was under the impression they were just giving up their DCR services. So does anybody know more than I do? That they are giving up drug and alcohol or is that just a rumor?
I think that's a rumor. Um, I almost daily are, am in contact with um, Julie, who is the drug and alcohol counselor at Comprehensive. She is the only one at this moment that does outpatient um, groups and individual therapy um, for the whole county. Uh, so she is still actively working there. I haven't heard any rumors that she's planning on leaving or has left.
Was there always one or was there four and now there's one?
There was at one point like five drug and alcohol counselors. Um, then as people left, they chose not to refill them. Um. In the recent probably year, so Jeff Wolfinger was a counselor, was one of the main counselors in White Salmon. He retired in December. They chose not to re, uh, to fill his position. Uh, they brought on Ellen, who was at Lifeline Connections in Vancouver. She was on and was kind of the White Salmon uh, end counselor. Uh, she, she left because she was moving uh, to a different state. Um, and they just haven't refilled it uh, for whatever reason. I don't know if it's just because nobody's applied or what. Or what, what, what the answer is, I don't know. Um, so it's just Julie at this point. Uh, here in Goldendale, there was kind of historically two to three counselors on staff all the time. Now it's just one. Uh, and I can, when it's a court-ordered client to do drug and alcohol treatment in our county, they're the only ones that they, I can send them to because they're the only behavioral health agency. James Tuning up at Clicktech Valley Health can do drug and alcohol uh, evaluations and treatment. And it's all covered under his grant. It doesn't touch their, their insurance. Uh, it's completely free to the patient. So if they're not court-ordered, I would say um, refer them to KVH. Because it's free to the patient, um, and he can get them in fairly quickly. It's kind of, it's a very easy streamlined process. But if they're court-ordered, it has, it typically has to go through Comprehensive.
Is going to be, if we only have one person in the county that can do the court-ordered, what happens if that one person is gone?
That is a really.
And, and what will that do? I mean, we are already here that it's, you know, months and months and months just to get in to get, you know, your appointments.
That would be for mental health. I know mental health at KVH is six months out. Uh, for Comprehensive, they can do evaluations within the month, about a month out.
Okay.
Um, I've asked um, Comprehensive um, Edie, who is the acting director out of, for Comprehensive in our county, if she would allow James Tuning to do the evaluations, because it's the same ASAM criteria that they do. Uh, and then if they have to do treatment, they just refer them to Comprehensive. And she said it wasn't possible because of insurance reasons. Um, I'm not familiar with the insurance and how that all works out. Uh, but I, in conversations with other people that are familiar with it, they think that there is a possibility to, to do that. But I don't, I don't know why that's a problem. Uh, she did assure me that there was the ability to bring on us a drug and alcohol counselor to do it virtually, do virtual assessments. Um, if we got backlogged, um, but I have not yet seen that action take place. Uh, if, if Julie left and we did not have a drug and alcohol counselor in our county, that would be um, a very disservice to our county. We have a huge need, I think I was just tallying up like, the majority of my caseload is substance use related. You know, we see it, we're seeing a huge uptick in fentanyl uh, positive results. But the majority, it's alcohol, marijuana, methamphetamine and, and then fentanyl is probably the top drugs of choices that people are using in our county, in our communities. There's a, and then the mental health issues is, you know, KVH is our kind of next um, available for court-ordered clients uh, not, I'll take that back, not necessarily court-ordered clients, but uh, state insurance. That's kind of the, the key. Um, but they're six months wait out, waitlisted. I did reach out to C Mar, um, Community Health in Vancouver. And I talked to them about our dire need of mental health services and asked, is there any way you could help us? I have clients that are wanting help and are suffering, but they're not like in crisis. And they're not, you know, severely mentally ill, they're just, they're going through some struggles and I don't want it getting worse. Um, how can I help them? Because I can't have them waiting six months till they get, get into services. And uh, so they're willing to take on some of our virtual assessments and therapy. Uh, but he said top out at 10 cases, 10 clients is like all they could take on for right now without hiring additional staff on their end. Maybe eventually that, you know, if we are able to have some consistency, they would be willing to hire and kind of have a, a branch designated for us, I think they're willing. It is a virtual thing only. They did, he did tell me that there is the ability to talk to the insurance companies like uh, Molina and say, we need to do a single, we need to ask for a single case agreement. Um, and have the state insurance approve. And have the state insurance approve mental health or medications and treatment in a different state. Center for Living in the Dawes in Hood River. What I've been told by Erin Quinn was that they're interested and willing to help us. And so I think that might be something that we can collaborate with here in the near future is getting those single case agreements with the insurance agencies so that we can have our clients go over to Center for Living, because they both do substance use and mental health treatment there. My only concern is they wouldn't necessarily be able, able or allowed to do the substance use treatment depending on the crime because of statute and requirements and DOL issues that it would cause problems with. But the mental health, I don't see why we couldn't let them go over to the Dawes and do it, it's an insurance issue. So if we can figure out a way to navigate around that so that the patient is able to get the medications and the therapy met, I think that is a great start. I talked with one community health in the Dawes and they're, they're willing to entertain it. I think it would just be a question on whether or not they would have to abide by Washington's WAC requirements when it came to mental health services. I just, I don't think that's a hard no for them, I think there's just some conversations we would have to have. So those are, I'm kind of trying to like put my feelers out and get services as much as possible so that people are not struggling and set up for failure. So that's what we're trying to do. On top of, you know, day to day, weekly maintenance with them. See litter crew's going good. We have the litter crew supervisor using the truck right now. There's only max four seats in there for participants and that's really cramming three people in the back, three adults in the back seat. We do have the van, but in, when we were inspecting the van from the transfer from solid waste, there's a lot of maintenance that needs to be done. We need new brakes on the van, it's not safe. The tires need to be checked out, which we are going to get a rough estimate on all these things here, hopefully this week. The, the AC fan unit is really noisy, so something's clicking and broken in between there. And then on top of it, the trailer that, that usually hauls most of the trash, especially when you take the van out, you have to have somewhere to put all the bags of garbage that is picked up, doesn't, the lights are not working, there's some electrical issues. So I did, we did get a quote this morning on that, it's like rough, little over $200, rough estimate, because they haven't gotten in there and checked and seen what the issue is. But I'm working with Rob to see if there's some funding in solid waste budget to cover that cost, to get that fixed so that when they're out on the crew, the lights are all working properly, the taillights, the brake lights, all that stuff, because there is that need to have extra space. The truck bed is a short bed with the toolbox in it, it's very limited space. And then there's lots more trips to the transfer station when you could just do one big load. So we're, we're trying to get a look at those issues. And in talking with the Department of Ecology, we are top of the list for come next June, July to get a, a new van. As long as everything plays out as planned. So there'll be some discussion, a meeting within the next month about where those fundings, the funding for the new vehicles are coming and who would be next in line for a new vehicle, because the van is about 12 years old.
How many people are you getting a day? Are, are the numbers coming up for use of the van and the truck? Are we, are we getting more people diverted for work?
We are getting more referrals for the litter crew program and what I've asked the staff to do is like, when somebody wants to do community service for in lieu fines or in jail, and historically unless it's somebody that has medical and physical limitations or an employer that refuses to let them have a day off to do their litter crew, everybody's diverted to the litter crew versus community service. So we're trying to get more that way. She's got about 11 signed up for litter crew right now, but with only three to four spaces on the, in the truck, that doesn't allow everybody to get their, their hours done in the month. Some are mandatory one day a week or even two days a week at times. Right now, the two day a week person is, is done, or at least on hold right now until the next court hearing. But majority, there's not necessarily a set deadline of how many per week to do. There usually is a deadline of due, you're done, you have to be done by this date. However, if there's, if it's because of like an R issue, because we don't have the availability or the space for that person because of the, maybe the van, you know, van's not up and running yet or whatnot, then we can always ask the court to give them an extension. Because it's not the client's fault, it's, it's just a space issue. So that's why we're trying to get the van up and running so that it can, we can hold more people.
Clarification, the grant is 30 hours or three days a week, and you do two days of adult and one day of two, correct?
Correct. The grant doesn't specify how many hours necessarily, they want poundage. So it's like they want us to reach amount of pounds per grant year.
I thought the grant only funded 30 hours and we were funding the other five.
I haven't seen that specifically outlined like that, I think that's just when you break down the dollars, it comes out. That way.
That there's enough dollars to basically fund 30 hours or three, and then we have to do the other.
Right.
You do the half day admin day essentially in the grant. My point is you're picking up tracks for you.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so we have 10 or 12 people on the list for adults.
Right.
But we only have two days, so the max we can actually take out in a week is eight.
Yes. Some are kind of waitlisted, or if they don't have to.
Waitlisted to be on the litter crew.
Not.
It could be waitlist too, because if there's three adults our size.
Yeah, sorry, I'll ride in the back.
Back of the truck.
Or somebody is just doing fines, working off fines and it's, they might only do it like once or twice a month. And so then that allows another person, a new referral to get in at least once or twice a month. One day of work crew, I mean, if you're, if they're getting 10 hours in that work crew day, at 1449, which is the minimum wage, they're getting over $100 credited towards their fees on, for their like court fees or probation fees, or it gets converted to in lieu of jail.
I think now is probably a good time to have a little bit of an update on, with the mental health, substance abuse, where we're at, where we're going. Especially, so Director Quinn, could you come up? You can talk to it a lot better than I can probably remember it. We'd been talking about, you know, with this budget and your ask for another position, the funds that we were hoping that we'd be able to use for that, I don't think we're going to be able to use, and that was the mobile crisis dollars.
It was the True Blood.
True Blood, oh yeah, it was the True Blood funds, and that doesn't look like that'll work. But with what we have for the potential draft agreement with Beacon, we may be able to do like halftime case manager for you and then halftime case manager on the mental health side, because there's clearly a nexus, right? And whether they're, you're doing it beforehand or afterhand. So that might be the best that we can do budget wise and everything, but I just want to let you know that we're still working on it and seeing what we can come up with. In regards to, you know, the direction, you know, right now, from our meeting on Monday, whenever we've met Chris. We've got a pretty hefty budget, 604,000, I think, between now and the end of the year to stand up our program, you know, purchase equipment, rent and all that kind of stuff. And then we, the, the idea is to start, continue using Lifeline until at least the end of the year.
If they're amenable.
If they're amenable, which hopefully you're going to say yes right now, but we don't know yet.
If they're amenable.
And then bring on some more DCRs. So that, you know, right now, we're paying one person all the time, you know, and they're getting two calls on average a week and so.
There was 11 calls in August, I just got the report and I'll send that up when I get back to the office.
11.
Phone calls.
Phone calls. That was to Lifeline.
Total.
Total.
I'll, I'll send you the breakdown when I get back down.
But one or two DCR calls, you know, in essence. But we need to have that coverage, same thing as, you know, in 911, you got to have the 24 hour coverage or EMS. So if we can get, so we can start hiring to bring those people on there, but then you're hearing the same thing, we've got the substance use problems. As far as I know, Comprehensive still is saying, we're not pulling out, but they're cleaning out their buildings. And they had a bunch of.
That was kind of where I was going with my earlier.
I know, you don't want to say it the way it is, but it sure feels like they're leaving.
They sent a letter last time I said it the way it is.
Yeah. Who divorces who first, remember? So anyways, part of that is also bringing on a SUDP, substance abuse person, three DCRs, the case manager. And I don't have the paper in front of me, so what am I forgetting?
Clinical supervisor.
And a clinical supervisor, because there has to be.
How many positions total? Do I need to count that as five?
Six.
No, because then there's also the, the health worker. At the bottom.
How many desks am I going to need to get?
That's where, I'm not going to, can I answer that on a different day?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I'm working on that.
But.
Because it's going to depend, right? Because some of it isn't going to be like in the office all the time, so do you have a shared desk anyway? That's, that's a conversation I'm having, I don't have an answer. Pardon? That's, that's fine too. Some of it will have to be in office, right? You talk about health information, there has to be, so, but having a combination of what we actually are required to have in a footprint that's available and anyway, but I'm, I'm having that conversation and would like to get that on a different day when I have better.
But in essence, so the main thing, you know, going into these negotiations, we the county are tapped, we're not at, we're not wanting to do this. Number one, we need to pay for Erin's time, you know, for everything that she's been doing on this. All the rest of this needs to be covered by Beacon or by the MMOs, Molina, or whatever they are. And if, you know, we're going to have to stand this up, then we're not using county funds to do this. So kind of like Erin's department isn't using any county funds this year. I mean.
Oh man, by the way.
It's going really well, we can talk about that on Thursday.
I know, yeah, I saw the updated pages in my book and they made me smile.
Good, I'm glad.
One question I have is, the SUDP person that you were to bring on, is that to do, what is that person to do, is that treatment?
Can we, can we talk about that afterwards?
Because my, my fear would be if that person was the remaining person at Comprehensive and we're not a BHA, then where do my clients go?
We're gonna, so that's, that's what we're working on, we're going to be a BHA before.
Understood.
Hopefully the end of next month, hopefully.
Gotcha. Okay, that uses my fears. I had a little bit of panic for a moment, I was like.
No, we can't.
Most of the time it scares the heck out of you, the government can do a better job than private, but in some cases now I do believe that it is possible.
Well, County does it.
Well, it depends on if you only have one private source and you have to take the one private source.
Yeah.
There's no free market system for competition.
But I, but I will say though, that, you know, through this process, you heard it earlier today from Jeff, that it's moving smoother than it ever has, that things are going well. Our meetings, you know, on Wednesdays, all of the groups are coming together, you know, everybody's working together, everybody sees the need, we all see it. And sadly, we're the ones that have to stand it up and to answer the need. But I think it's creating a lot of goodwill, Director Quinn is doing a great job managing this tortoise at times, it feels like, sometimes it feels like a train coming at you. But I think we're, we're going to get there.
Yeah, and she's been amazing at keeping me informed and involved as much as possible and I really appreciate that.
She is amazing.
She is. Don't let somebody steal her.
Other questions for Courtney?
I just have one quick question, is there any other updates on the opioid settlement? Have we heard anything yet?
That's going to be the, the money in the, in the hole.
That's the money to fill the gaps. And I don't know that we'll have a final answer on that, they have to, all the cities and counties have to submit their paperwork by, I want to say June or September 25th.
Okay.
So for the most part.
We've done ours.
Okay. It's just a waiting game at this point.
So yeah, it's a waiting game to see if I think it's 90% of the eligible municipalities fill out the paperwork. If they do, we're rolling, if they don't, I don't know what Plan B is, they haven't really discussed Plan B, but it makes it sound like there is a Plan B.
Yeah.
So they just don't want to talk about it, so we'll see how I think it's.
Can I ask you a question about that? Is the municipalities in this county or just in general for all the?
This county is the county. Cities don't qualify.
No, our cities don't qualify.
Our cities, okay, thank you.
So Clickatack County is 100% compliant, we're done. And you got me, did you get, you got me the list of?
The percentages and costs, yes, I, I got that to you Friday afternoon.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. And I don't think I have questions at the moment, just wanted to tell you that, you know, our, the staff in my office is just amazing, just want to kind of publicly acknowledge them because they've been working their tushes off and they've, they're maxed out, but they are, they're troopers and I appreciate it, I appreciate that, appreciate that they're willing to step up and take on a little bit more, even if it may cause them a little bit more stress to help the team and make sure like things are getting done. But I'm continuously reminding them to make sure to take care of themselves, because we can't take care of others if we're not taking care of ourselves. We, we learn that the hard way sometimes. Or you get, or you get the watches, they have these watches now that tell you what your heart rate is, if it gets starting to get a, oh nice, there you go.
It's so he can.
Alert you, time, time for a break.
No. We're talking about pressure, guys.
Yeah?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney.
Wonderful. Thank you. You have a good evening or afternoon.
We'll have a good everything.
Or both, yes.
All right, perfect timing, next up, we have Mid Columbia Housing and Columbia Cascade Housing Corporation Executive Director Joel. Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you as well, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Chair Anderson, Commissioners, I'm Joel Mattson, the Executive Director of Mid Columbia Housing Authority and Columbia Cascade Housing Corporation and helped lead Columbia Gorge Housing Authority as well. And I, I want to just start by acknowledging kind of why I'm here this afternoon and kind of what I felt you would like to hear, but I also want to welcome your questions and comments about what you would like to touch bases on here this afternoon too. I wanted to share a reminder about our governance structure that allows us to work together across the five county region that we serve and how Clickatack County is connected to that. I wanted to share our primary lines of business with you and updates that we have specifically along those areas of operations here in Clickatack County. And then I want to talk a little bit more about some of the development activity that we're involved in, more specifically the assisted living facility that we've been working in partnership with Clickatack County on, and other developments that we're engaged in here in Clickatack County. So I'll jump right in, as you may or may not be aware, Clickatack County appoints two members to Columbia Gorge Housing Authority's Board. Commissioner Soder has been a long serving member and I just want to publicly thank him for his service to Columbia Gorge Housing Authority on behalf of Clickatack County. He also has served on Columbia Cascade Housing Corporation's Board for as many years, which is our nonprofit organization that primarily does our development activities throughout the county. So thank you for allowing Commissioner Soder to represent Clickatack County and I just want to again publicly thank your engagement, involvement with the. And I just want to again publicly thank your engagement, involvement with the organizations over your tenure here in the county. Laurel Harper is the other appointed member that you all have appointed to Columbia Gorge Housing Authority's Board. So Clickatet County has two appointments to our board. City of Goldendale has one appointment and then Skamani County has one appointment to the Columbia Gorge Housing Authority Board. That board works together with the Mid Columbia Housing Authority Board to carry out the work. Yeah, so when these, when the organization was formed as a regional public housing authority, it needed three jurisdictions to comprise that, to meet the revised code, Washington, to be eligible as a regional housing authority. That was before my time, so I don't know all of the discussions that occurred. But that was the third identified jurisdiction that was willing, interested and able to form an individual housing authority, then come together with Clickatet County and Skamani County to form the regional housing authority. My pleasure. So our three organizations work together to promote and administer affordable housing solutions across the five county service area. Clickatet, Skamani Counties here in Washington State, as well as Hood River Wasco and Sherman Counties in Oregon. And we, I also want to just acknowledge some of our value statements. So we, we understand and value that healthy habits take root more easily in stable, affordable homes. We understand that children are able to achieve better results in school when they live in a stable, affordable home. We know that home recharges us for the workday or school day ahead. And the importance of that home, safe place to be, is only going to help us achieve better results in our, in our daily lives. When we take pride in our home, we can take pride in our community, making it a safer place to live for everyone. And we value that affordable homes allow people to spend more in the local economy when they're spending less on their homes. We work toward our mission through four primary lines of business. First being rental assistance administration, asset building and resident services development. The third line of business is development or asset management and property management. And our fourth line of business is homeownership resources. And I'll talk a little bit more about those specific lines of business in Clickatet County. I want to acknowledge our annual operating goals. So our boards establish these five annual operating goals at our annual meeting. The first being expand the supply of assisted housing. Second being improve the quality of assisted housing. The third being increase assisted housing choices. Fourth being promote self-sufficiency and asset development of assisted families. And fifth is ensure equal opportunity and affirmatively further fair housing objectives. I mentioned I'd talk a little bit more detail about our lines, four lines of business in Clickatet County. So across the five county region, we invest over $550,000 each month in rent assistance directly into the private rental market. So that's on behalf of roughly 870 households. And our housing certifiers and housing inspectors work daily with participants as well as landlords to ensure program compliance, to ensure that the assisted units that were providing resources to meet housing quality standards and just continued program education for both program participants and landlords. So Columbia Gorge Housing Authority has capacity for 271 voucher participants or 271 households for Clickatet and Skamani Counties. And year-to-date leasing, we've been able to utilize 95% of our available unit months. So that's a pretty high, high target. In spending, we're about 93%. So we have some capacity to go a little bit more and serving more households, but we're spending about 93% of our annual budget authority. Good question that I don't have an answer for right this moment. It's, we have been able to issue more vouchers. So the waitlist ebbs and flows by how many vouchers we issue, right? And we have been in.
Because what's the, what's the utilization of the voucher? Like just because you have a voucher doesn't mean.
Exactly.
You can find a place to use the voucher. How long is the voucher good for? Six months?
We, it's 90 days, but we, we allow extensions at this point because we're really hoping people can find a place. But for every, you know, it's, it's kind of like the airlines, you know, they overbook airplanes to achieve a full flight, right? We're doing similar. We're issuing 10 vouchers, but unfortunately, we're seeing four or five of those vouchers come back as unused because they can't find a place. So all of that, like.
We're always trying to, the big terror is something's going to happen. And it's like the airlines, we're going to have issued these and they used them all. And we're like, uh-oh. We can't, we can't afford that.
The other thing that's happened is that, and we've been able to access additional vouchers. So instead of just the stagnant 271 vouchers we've had for years, we've been able to access additional federal resources for permanent affordable housing vouchers. So we've seen program participants that lease up in those other special purpose vouchers instead of the Housing Choice Voucher Program.
Does the voucher work? Does it work anywhere in the gorge or does it only work out of a specific county?
So we operate two contracts with HUD, one for our Washington service area and one for our Oregon service area. So we maintain separation in the budget authority.
So somebody that's living in Oregon and gets a voucher isn't going to get a voucher for Washington.
That's correct. That's correct. They would have to apply separately to our waitlist. We have one waitlist for Washington, one. And then I was reading into your question a little bit, but stop me if this is not what you're asking. We pay up to the identified payment standards per assisted unit. And the participant pays approximately 30% of their income. We pay the difference between 30% of their income and what the landlord is charging, so long as it's within our payment standard that we've established.
How much, how much is your payment standard?
Yeah, so I, I figured you would ask this question, so I actually wrote this one down for.
I gotta go find it.
These are established county per county, right? So for Clickatet County, the one-bedroom fair market rent is, this is what HUD has published as fair market rent. One-bedroom apartment is $781. And, and the, this is countywide.
I've argued about that before, that you have such a diversity in the.
Right.
Well, that's why the vouchers are over here.
The, the board has recently requested, well, our organization's requested a waiver from HUD to allow us to set the payment standard at 120% of the fair market rent. In part because of the recognition of the different market issues that we have throughout the county. So our payment standard is actually for a one-bedroom apartment, $935 currently. And Clickatet County, for a two-bedroom apartment, the payment standard is $1,225, whereas the fair market rent is 1,027. Actually, at this month's board meeting, we're going to be reevaluating these payment standards because HUD has just released new fair market rents. So that will be a topic of discussion amongst the board members here this.
And we have, without the special waiver, we have the ability between 90 and 110%. We can adjust per, I mean, just locally, we can set it.
Correct.
We have to be in the 90 to 110.
And so, so that's 1225, they're going to pay 30% of their income and then you make up that difference to 1225.
Yep, it's not quite that simple, but very close because.
So what if the only thing.
Utilities too.
Correct. And that includes or doesn't include utilities?
It does include.
Utility allowances would be subtracted from the payment standard unless the landlord is paying for those. So if it's the responsibility of a tenant, they're going to be, the payment standard is reduced by the utility allowances.
So that's all in cost of 1225?
Correct.
And so if they're renting it, say for 1,400, you know, that's what the landlord wants. Can that person say, well, I'm willing to go 35% and make up that difference?
So upon initial lease, so this is getting into like, I'm not a program expert. We have some great staff that are. But my, what I, at initial lease up, we can't allow people to pay more than 30% of their income.
Okay.
If they're on the program and the market changes, we have been able to allow folks to pay up to 40% of their income. But those are the scenarios that, again, it's not able on initial lease up of the voucher, but in an annual, they could. So another just point of context, so our primary households that we're serving are people earning at or below 50% of the area median income on this program. So in Clickatet County, that's for a family of four, that's a, that's a household earning 39,450 or below. The kind of the primary target that's being served by this, these Housing Choice vouchers. And the other point of context I wanted to share is that we have 74 different active landlords that participate in our rent assistance programs here in Clickatet County.
Do you have a breakdown of areas?
Not with me. I'm happy to. I, I thought, to be honest, I thought I was doing a pretty good job of focusing just on Clickatet County because we usually look regionally. But if that's of interest, I can see how, how deep I can go in our data sets.
I guess I'd see I'm looking for diversity or if it's all kind of in one spot, which I think I already know the answer, but.
It's not as, not diverse as you thought. I have the same. And I know you could, we've, because we've asked for that as far as where the vouchers are being used on. And I know we can get it because the board is asking for the same reason, as far as like, are these all just concentrated in one spot?
I did ask by the public and I don't know the answer.
Yeah.
So if it's, if it's possible, information will be great.
You bet. I'm happy to follow up.
It is way, from memory, it is weighted, but it's not as severe as I thought it would be.
If there are 74 and, you know, 64 of them are in one spot, that's.
Well, you're forgetting Roosevelt.
Oh, oh, there's, you got a bunch of wars, there's probably a bunch of issues.
Yeah, there is.
We do generally see our vouchers spread out across the county, but similar to your population areas. I mean, it's, it's probably going to be very similar to that, that breakout throughout the county, but I'll follow up with you. I mentioned some of the other vouchers we've been able to bring into our community. So a particular program called the Mainstream Voucher Program. Mainstream voucher programs are available to people who are non-elderly and disabled and homeless or at risk of homelessness or exiting an institution or at risk of institutionalization. We have capacity to serve 79 households under this particular program. Works very similar to the Housing Choice Voucher Program we just talked about. It's just a special target population that, for eligibility. And then the other, so we had zero of those vouchers three years ago. In the last three years, we've increased our capacity to serve these 80 households, 79 to be specific.
The 79, is that, is that Clickatet and Skamani or just Clickatet?
That is.
The organization, the region, thank you.
That is Clickatet and Skamani Counties. Emergency housing vouchers is another special purpose voucher that we've been able to attract to our region. It assists individuals and families who are homeless or at risk of homelessness, fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking or human trafficking, or were recently homeless or have a high risk of housing instability. Columbia Gorge Housing Authority has capacity to serve 15 households under this emergency housing voucher program.
How do you get your referrals for this program? Are they referred from, say, the jail or law enforcement or probation? Or they just happen to hear about you on the radio and.
Great question. So we work often, as we do with our community partners, whether it's departments here in Clickatet County or Washington Gorge Action Programs. In this case, the emergency housing vouchers is required to come through the COC or Continuum of Care to, so that even if we receive applicants, we have them engaged with WA GAAP to make sure that they're receiving those services that are appropriate. And then they're referred to us through the COC or Continuum of Care for use of the vouchers.
But they can get into the, through various, but they get directed to the, to sort of correct intake.
You know, somebody that's suffering from domestic violence or something, they don't know that this is.
They don't know any of it, right.
Unless they go to programs for peaceful living or something and they tell them. So that's kind of what I figured. I just wanted to make sure you had partner.
Absolutely. We've been able to step up to the plate during the COVID-19 pandemic and assist with various other forms of assistance. And I just want to thank Clickatet County for being our local government partner in partnership with the Director Quinn's Department. We were able to attract CDBG CV1 funds for the county, which is used to, for rent, mortgage or utility assistance for residents either in Skamani or Clickatet County with a drop in income due to COVID-19. So we've, to date, we've assisted 24 households with almost $56,000 in rent, utility or mortgage arrears. And that's dating back since April 2021. I mentioned our second line of business is around asset building and wealth building with our program participants and residents. And one of our primary programs that we utilize to help with that is our Family Self-Sufficiency Program. The Family Self-Sufficiency Program provides or enables households that are participating in our voucher program to increase their earned income and reduce their dependency over time on welfare or public assistance. So as program participants increase their income, that increase in income is actually goes to a savings account that they can then access for their identified goals upon graduation of the program. And, and we provide wraparound case management services as part of that Family Self-Sufficiency Program. So we have 28 households that are participating in our Washington service area. Just wanted to call out that 21 have had increases in earned, earned income since they enrolled in our Family Self-Sufficiency Program. I sent a presentation to Lee. I don't know if she's had the pleasure to see that.
We're looking.
You all have the pleasure to see it.
Follow line and we're all scrolling.
Please take a minute to look at the Family Self-Sufficiency success story when you get a chance. It's really how, it's where the rubber hits the road, right? It's for households that have, this particular household, just acknowledging the benefit and support that this program has provided to them. We also provide financial education courses, both in English and Spanish. And we find that is just a great way to connect with people, whether they're our Family Self-Sufficiency participants or other residents at our properties or community members. They're not limited to just people we serve, but it's a way that we're trying to help educate our community about financial resources and how to, you know, realize their dream, if there is a dream of theirs, to own their own home at some point. We work them on credit building and understand what it, what it may take to get to that point. We provided, some of our smaller rent assistance programs include the Washington Home Program or Shelter Plus Care. I particularly mentioned those a couple of weeks ago. You all, thank you for supporting a match for the Shelter Plus Care Program out of the Affordable Housing Funds here in Clickatet County. That allows us to leverage other federal funds for this Shelter Plus Care Program.
How many folks are, are enrolled in Shelter Plus Care?
Five in Clickatet County.
Five in, yeah, okay.
You're not scrolling.
Oh, sorry. Let me go through.
I was writing.
I should know it. I get briefed on it once a month, so.
The Shelter Plus Care, both of these are federal pass-through programs that go through the state and then we access those for our region. I'm going to transition now away from Columbia Gorge Housing Authority and the Mid Columbia Housing Authority business and really zero in more specifically on the nonprofit business, which is development of affordable housing communities and homeownership programs. So Columbia Cascade Housing Corporation, we have a portfolio of 389 apartment homes throughout our five county service area. It does include Oregon as well as Washington. Here in Clickatet County, we have four locations currently and 33 units of our portfolio. I'm going to talk later about how we're working to expand that portfolio specifically here in Clickatet County. Through, I mentioned also Columbia Cascade Housing Corporation provides homeownership resources. One of the ways that we do that here in Clickatet County is we administer the home repair program. So we're in our third cycle of accessing community development block grant, minor home repair funds to be used throughout the region of Clickatet, Skamani Counties that we're seeing repairs being used for upgrades with energy efficient windows or doors, electrical work and plumbing repairs, heating, cooling systems. We've installed or replaced, as well as roofs, siding, foundation repairs and accessibility upgrades. The first two programs, again, I mentioned, we're on round three. So the first two rounds, we've served 17 households here in Clickatet. So the first two rounds, we've served seventeen households here in Clickcat County, investing over three hundred, about three-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand of that program here in Clickcat County. We've, the first round, we worked with the City of Bingen. I just, again, thank you Commissioner Sada for helping make that happen. I remember some of those conversations. And the second round, we worked with the City of Stevenson as our local government partner. This third round, we're working with the City of White Salmon. I'm just emphasizing that as we're really rotating our partnership throughout the region, but maintaining a regional focus on the minor home. I mentioned here in the presentation too, we have been working, Columbia Cascade Housing Corporation has been working on a community land trust model or a shared equity model to help advance affordable homeownership. And the gist of it is that the organization retains ownership in the land and leases that land to a homeowner that mortgages the home on top of the land. And through that structure of a ground lease, we're able to perpetuate affordability, meaning we agree through that ground lease that we're sharing equity with the homeowner, which is one of the elements that allows it to maintain its affordability well into the future. It gets complex quick, but our organization over the last couple of years has been building out our infrastructure, our policies, our programs to be able to employ this type of model when the timing is right to do that. And we have three kind of developments in the works where we're looking at the viability of that model. One of those is we own a parcel in, seven acre parcel in Carson that looks like it could produce about fourteen homes on that parcel. We are in discussions with the City of White Salmon. They're working through a PUD or Planned Unit Development Process right now. And they, the council has agreed to invest some of their ARPA funds to purchase ten of those to be created lots in that PUD. And they intend to give those to us then to employ this shared equity homeownership model. And then we've been able to pick up a couple of sites in the DOWs through, these were tax foreclosed properties that we were able to access from the county prior to them going to auction. And so we're trying to figure out how to make those affordable homeownership opportunities as well.
Do you have to buy those from the county or do they just?
In this case, we did for back taxes and other costs. That's not our preference, but understandably, and, and it doesn't always make sense for us to do that. You know, if, you know, what our main goal is in the acquisition of those properties is we have to make sure that what the end result is going to be is going to work for our mission, right? We want it to be affordable, so we can't be paying market, is my point, for those properties. So we were able to work with the county before those properties went to auction and pay, in this case, the back taxes. So I know this is one of the things that one of the members in the audience is here to hear about a little bit with the developments in early stage of development. We have, I want to focus on two here in Clickcat County. The planning department has been spectacular to work with on our White Salmon assisted, sorry, Clickcat County Assisted Living Facility.
Trying to rebrand it.
That we are.
That's about to cost you a bunch of money.
And, and I, I have a typo in my presentation too. ALF stands for Assisted Living Facility. Don't scratch out the WS. That has no meaning in the presentation. But it's the rendering here of our Assisted Living Facility. We have really made it through the local entitlements, again, with just the support of Clickcat County Planning Commission, our planning department. And we are still committed as an organization to pull an off this development. We envision fifty-two units of Assisted Living Facility here. Thirty-six of those are targeted to Assisted Living Services. Sixteen would be available to people who have memory care issues that need a higher level of services to live independently. We have a commitment to at least twenty-five percent of the development to be affordable. So people that are on Medicaid would be able to reside. To date, we've been able to secure three-point-two million of committed resources from the Washington State Department of Commerce Housing Trust Fund. We initially had one-point-eight million and we've been able to, through ask to them, been able to increase that up to three-point-two million. Obviously, the county with acquiring the property and leasing it back to us, that's a strong commitment that we've been using in discussions with our other funders to show the local support for this development. And most recently, we've seen the support of our federal delegation with this development being included in the draft appropriations bill under congressionally directed spending. So Senator Murray's office championed this with two-point-five million of congressionally directed spending in that draft appropriations bill. I rattled off a bunch of numbers, but the end of the, end of the story is we don't have enough to actually make the development work.
Of course, five-point-seven now.
Of, well, three-point-two have committed.
Right.
The others, the draft.
The others in the draft.
But if we get, get that, then how far off are we?
So I can't answer that with clarity today because we still envision working with the USDA Rural Development as our primary lender on this development. And they may be able to lend up to eighty-five percent of the loan to value on the development. Maybe they're going to determine that they can only lend seventy-five percent. It's been a very ambiguous process to be working with them on. And we work with them on many other developments too. This one's been an added level of complexity for some reason.
What is your new number for whatever cost to build?
We are still, we had escalators in our, in our construction budgets. We're still around twenty million at this point.
And how much do you think you can afford to get a loan at and still make a profitable case at it?
So our intent is not to be profitable.
I mean, be able to profit by paying back self-sufficient.
Yeah. So we, we could accept up to eighty percent at this point of, if it's, you know, the thing about the USDA Rural Development Loan is that it's well below market. We can't access a market loan and be able to do this development. That just doesn't work. So I know I, I don't have a straight answer on like the exact, how big the loan is in part because over the last year, we've seen rates increase and that impacts even the USDA Rural Development Loan.
Right.
Right? So just this delay that we've been having through working with the department, it's increasing, decreasing our ability to leverage as much funds because the interest rates continue to go up.
But if you still think it's a twenty-million-dollar project and you've got, and if, you know, the federal delegation comes through with five-point-seven and you can take a loan for sixteen, you should have enough to close that.
I do not, I think we still have fundraising to do beyond that.
Even beyond that?
I do.
So you don't think the twenty million is going to be quite cut it?
Well, I don't, that's the total cost. The, the loan's going to come in. I think we're going to be asked to bring more equity and I don't want to risk it. You know, if RD's at the table saying, here, we're going to, we can do seventy-five percent and we've had construction costs go up and we only have these other commitments of five-point-seven, we need to be able to have that, the additional equity to bring the seventy-five percent of the proceeds to do the development together. So our board has been talking about different fundraising strategies. We've been in the community talking to a, a few targeted, high net worth individuals in Clickcat County. You know, we haven't shaken that tree loose, but we've been in discussions with some. Nobody's said, yes, let's do it as far as investment at this point. We've talked to a couple of organizations in the region that we thought may have an interest in helping to invest. And frankly, this is a conversation with our state representative and state senator as well. While we have the commitment through the Housing Trust Fund, I think there, we should be looking at capital budget direct appropriation request and would certainly welcome you all's support in that. And my understanding is, you know, our, our delegates are pretty supportive of this project, particularly Senator King has, you know, voiced his support in a few different ways. So, and again, thanks for that connection and helping.
We just got to get RD. We got to get that locked down. Because if we can't, we need to go back to the drawing board.
Right.
Is RD the one saying no?
Right. They're not saying no. They're just not. Although, no, we had a response today or.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, so. Once a month.
I, I asked them for updates once a week at this point.
I know, but you only actually get something. It's about once a month.
There's, there's been a, you know, we've been in this parallel process with RD of beginning the underwriting of the actual development, but also their determination of entity eligibility, right? So they have made it challenging to get through really the entity eligibility discussions. And they, we haven't been able to advance our particular project underwriting because of that.
Right.
That issue. I, I think we're close to unlocking this as a non-issue. But it's been a year since they initially approved our, our application.
Giving me loans on other things?
We have many RD-funded developments in our portfolio.
This whole, you're not qualified as a new developer.
It is perplexing to me. However, it is a different type of funding. It's not in their rural housing services. It's in their community, community facilities program. I, I don't know if they actually are federally different in the requirements of like entity eligibility, but that's one of the things that, it's just slightly different. So I, I still feel strongly that it's navigable and we have not.
I know. It's, believe me, I, Joel's witnessed my frustration with, with the federal folk.
Have they done it before?
Have, they've been, we're really modeling this development off a very similar development that was a community facilities loan on the Kitsap Peninsula, working with a nonprofit, same operating partner.
Nonprofit.
Yeah, same, same, same thing.
Structure.
So we, it's not, I, I feel strongly it's navigable as long as we can hang in there and make it through the bureaucratic process.
Keep up the good fight. Well, I guess maybe there's silver lining in, in prices of building materials and contractors will go down by the time you get a yes.
But interest rates will go up.
The other development.
Nancy.
I know. The other development that we're actively involved in is the acquisition and rehab of Ryan Village. Ryan Village is a feder, existing federally funded USDA Rural Development Property. And we're well into our underwriting with that. We expect to close here in December or January where we're acquiring that property from West Clickcat Community Housing and injecting significant capital into the development to bring it up to the standards that you and I would want to live in. Well, would be, it would be appropriate for any of our community members to live in.
By the hospital in White Salmon.
Right. Thirty-six units comes with rent assistance as well as other federal investments.
How much is the budget for the rehab per unit?
I want to say it's close to a hundred and forty a unit.
Per unit?
Per unit.
So that includes, that includes, we already have selected our contract.
Yeah, sorry. Again, it would go to that conflict of interest.
A hundred and four per unit?
I think it's even higher than that.
I think it's a hundred and forty.
Tear it down and build new.
The, the.
You know what a unit costs to build though now? Not for a hundred and forty.
Does include exterior and common area upgrades, so it's not just inside the units.
Still.
It is, it is significant.
But it is.
Let's also acknowledge that the complexity of the development is going to require temporary relocation.
Right.
So we have to account for that in our project budgets as well. That's the all-in number.
Because people are living in there, thirty-six.
So where are you going to get thirty-six?
You know, it's going to rotate. I asked the same, I was like, where are we going to put thirty-six families while we do it?
How many are you going to do at a time?
I don't have that specific detail as far as.
Much smaller. And some of them will be temporary, pretty temporary as far as, and they have, we talked about too, some vacancy too, as far as, because there is some turn, some, and then you could kind of say, you know, move people. Don't fail to use that as the rotation.
How much is the average rents there at Ryan Village?
I don't have that in front of me either.
I guess they're not really rents because they're all subsidized.
They all come with rent assistance or project-based rent assistance. So the participant pays thirty percent of their income, but there's still a market rent that the subsidy pays up to.
Which should be the same.
It's similar. It's not the same because.
It's really, it's not the same?
RD has different.
Of course they do.
Yeah.
I would that out. It's thirty-nine thousand, four fifty for a family of four comes out to nine-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and twenty-five cents a month. As if you're at the top end, your eligibility.
How is your or our Roosevelt project? Is it?
It's doing well.
Is it? Well, I, I mean, back when I was a citizen in the room, it was half occupied because nobody qualified and instead we fixed those things and now it's occupied and now it's not being county subsidized anymore. Hasn't crossed my budget list since I got here, obviously. You guys were writing checks for that for a while and now we're not, so it must be okay.
We weren't actually writing check. We were accessing the document recording fees for capital improvements. I don't think we ever used it for actual subsidy for the project. I think we did a project, I mean, there was a specific, you know, new air conditioners or new, and we had spent all of the, not that that's, I mean, it's a little finer point, but. No occupancy, we didn't, the eligibility has not changed because those aren't really county dollars. That's the point I'm making. Their, their recording fee document, just the auditor collects it. So it's not like general fund or even landfill dollars. They're.
But it doesn't go into our, our.
We wouldn't be able to spend money on anything else anyways.
We can't spend it on anything else, right?
Right.
But yeah, there was, there was no change in eligibility. We actually authorized the, the, we weren't going to keep it. We have not been able to find off-taker. And in the interim, through whatever reason, the occupancy, it's, it's actually cash flowing. It's almost full. I mean, it's been full and it's, it's back to kind of the way it was, which it cash flowed and paid its, paid its way before. So back to the point last month, it was like, it's actually performing better than some of our, do, do we, other properties, but.
And, and it's an aging property that has deferred maintenance because it hasn't cash flowed every year.
Yeah.
You mean like somebody else want to get rid of Ryan Village?
Yeah.
Well, right.
For a hundred and forty thousand.
Kind of similar, similar to, but not quite the same as Ryan Village. And just to add to that finer point about the Affordable Housing Funds, Clickcat County has dedicated Affordable Housing Funds that have to be used on deed-restricted affordable housing. Like you can't use it for anything else. And so we at Pueblo del Rio, well, at Pueblo del Rio, what has happened.
I was trying to think of the name.
Pueblo del Rio.
When, when you have high occupancy, it can trigger property tax payment. Whereas, right, so in years past where we've had incomes that have increased because the property tax exemption is based on the number of people, the percentage of your property that's occupied at the end of a tax year. And so when the property has experienced significant property taxes in previous years, that's one of the resources we've accessed.
Oh, yeah.
To pay.
We did.
For the property taxes that were due.
Right.
So not always is Pueblo del Rio exempt from property taxes. And actually, we've used that Affordable Housing Fund to pay property taxes.
We did actually, one time we paid all the back taxes out of the affordable. So in a sense, we, I'm not going to use that word.
Yeah, we paid ourselves.
We converted it. And all the other junior taxing districts.
So some years it, it has to pay property taxes and some years it doesn't?
It's based on the percentage of residents at December thirty-one occupied as of that date that meet the income.
That meet the income requ.
Requirement to allow that, that particular property tax exemption. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this afternoon. I feel like it's been a while. Actually, it's my first time in your new building. It looks great. And I welcome any other questions that you may have.
Would you like to house a big pool on your property in White Salmon?
Yeah, we'd house pools if we needed to house. You think it would be perfect? We need money too.
You know, we have not, our organizations have not figured. You know, we have not, our organizations have not figured out how to manage parks or pools or anything beyond affordable housing. So I don't know that this would be the time, but assisted living slash pool.
Then we can call it spa.
It's a spa. That's right.
Or you can just send everybody from White Salmon to your house. I think you start.
By that, I mean, you know, I wish we could do more, but we have everybody asking us for funds while we're experiencing a budget deficit.
But we'll keep advocating as far as for that gap.
Yeah.
Again, it's like I, until we get RD figured out, it's, you know, eventually, it's, it's hard to advocate when we don't, like the base funding is, we don't know. You know, I, I am not that worried about, once we get that locked down and we need a little bit more. Everybody loves to be the last dollar that gets to, oh, now we're gonna have the groundbreaking. Am I, yeah, exactly. And it's like, where were you three years ago? But I don't care. But until we get that figured out and I'm.
There's no way using the other funds, the, the housing funds that you're accustomed to using? Because it doesn't fit that criteria either?
Actually, I, as I've been sitting here, I've been wondering, A, what the balance in the fund is. I don't have, I don't know that at this point in time. It generally hasn't gotten much more above like two hundred thousand at its height.
As far as the affordable housing? No.
No, no, no. I meant, I meant, you know, you said there's a program and you're going through the community program and finding out you're ineligible, but you usually go through a different program where you are eligible that you went.
That's for housing. This isn't really.
So this doesn't constitute that program. So when you sit there and you're like, well, we don't fit in this bucket, we don't fit in this bucket.
And, and, you know, the assisted living facility is frankly, it's a little different. We do have one other in our portfolio, but it's not a hundred percent affordable, right? As one example, this is a public-private partnership at its finest where there will be people that are private pay living there.
Paying market.
Paying market.
About seventy-five percent of them to make the economic model work.
And it makes the Medicaid and the affordable side of it work, right? So it's very typical to how we pull together our capital stacking is that we look upfront at below-market capital, but we're also looking at the long game. I'm like, what sort of subsidy are we gonna need to make this sustainable over this forty, fifty-year commitment?
You're not gonna have these numbers from you, but I'm hoping you can give us some shooting ideas. Under your best estimate, the people that are self-pay, what are they gonna have to pay per month? And the people in the twenty-five percent that's affordable, do they have to pay per month? From the Paul Parker Round Number.
Depends on their level of service requirements. Could be four thousand, could be less. Could be a little bit more. And again, it's gonna be driven on the, I think we have two or.
I would imagine memory care.
Memory care is gonna be the highest.
How much is memory care?
And there's like four tiers of levels of service on assisted living.
There's one in Seattle for nine grand.
Memory care nine grand? Oh, that's better than twelve.
I know Brookside, I mean, that's three years ago, so, because I had direct experience and it was, it was about six. Yeah, for the highest level.
Personal experience. It's gone up.
Okay. I mean, how, what's the?
Around eight.
Around eight now. As I said, yeah, in three years, that, a lot can.
Thankfully, my mother has good insurance.
Yeah. So that's about eight for the top end. I know, it's.
I mean, it's almost like live your life, pay off your home, and eventually sell your home and you might be able to afford a year or two.
Maybe.
Your facility, if you're lucky.
We only, I don't, it's not really an upside, it's a downside, but the reality is the average person, that's as far as. Yeah, it's not, the stay is limited, shortish. I mean, it's not a good thing because you only usually leave one way.
You don't get your memory.
Yeah, you don't get your memory back. So, but thankfully that it's, yeah. So if it's extended, you know, above the average, it, yeah, it's a huge burden for folks.
Thank you, sir.
A pleasure. Thanks for the opportunity.
Keep up all the good work. I know it's a very thankless job you do.
Okay. I'll be, I'll see you at the next meeting.
Sounds good. And thank, again, thank you for your years of dedication on behalf of Clickatuck County.
Well, you'll get, you'll get some new blood. We don't know who yet, although maybe.
There's some private citizens on that board.
Yeah, it's, no.
Have a good rest of your day.
You too.
Maybe you can continue working on your WS.
No, it's not WS anymore. We wanted to broaden it out.
All right. Consent agenda, boys.
So do you want to pull that one as far as on the, the car for a week while you?
I'm fine with it going there. I just, I, I guess I, I. Is, as long as everybody knows it isn't set in stone and in a year from now, you might lose a car.
Yeah.
Well, everybody could lose a bunch of cars in a year from now.
Right.
With that, I, I will make a.
Okay. Okay, I'll second the motion.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Casey, are you waiting to chat about? Is it on the agenda or you've just been sitting back there waiting? Can you raise your hand next time? Because I never know if you're here for something special or you're just a, come on, Ford, what do you got?
I know, when I see, I'm like, looking at the agenda. What could it be? Who's in trouble?
I mean, if we have to suffer.
Yeah, that's what I talked to.
I kind of thought at the end of public comment that I'd be able to sneak in, but.
If you would have raised your hand, McClure raised his hand.
I know. I thought, well, while he was running down, maybe I could. Helped him, so.
Yeah.
So, no, senior services, yeah, received a resignation for their part-time van driver down in the White Salmon area. And so we're just requesting verbal to post for the part-time van driver, the point six FTE down in the White Salmon area.
This isn't on, that was gonna be point six plus food, wasn't it?
No, no, this is different.
Yeah. Sorry, you waited an hour to get it. An hour and a half or, yeah.
Yeah, it was very interesting, so it was good stuff. So that's all I have.
My answer is yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Pay the bills?
Pay the bills.
And just. Like AP's relative, you know, again, it's relative. It's only two hundred and two thousand dollars. But it should be noted that of that, a hundred and forty thousand is albina fuel. So two hundred and two total AP, so that's paying the bills. A hundred and forty thousand, that's in one.
Gas bill.
Is the gas bill.
What's cars, what's gas?
Is that albina for our?
That's for, I don't know, I was gonna pull that because I was kind of curious if it was, we were filling everything up around, you know, our fuel farms? Or was that oil for the road? I mean, it's, we did it, we have, we're gonna pay it. It's not, it's not a big deal. I just thought, what, I was, it was kind of curious.
I wish I had that much diesel.
It is. Well, let's look. I was gonna, I was curious. And it's okay if you're listening, Public Works, we're not, we're gonna pay the bill.
Maybe.
Hey, hey, Dow. Eight-three-one-seven.
You get a hundred and fifty thousand.
Look at that, it was right in the front. Yeah, but if it was a whole year's supply. Yeah, I wouldn't think so. I wouldn't think we had that much on hand. Okay.
You're giving a five thousand gallon tank, a five gallon, you're twenty-five thousand dollars to fill a tank. At three of those, you're gonna be at seventy-five. I mean, I guess it's possible to be at a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, but we don't only, we don't fill up our tanks when they're empty.
Well, considering the, the unit prices per ton, it's the road oil, so. I don't think we buy diesel by the ton. I mean, we're, we buy tons of it, but we don't, but we don't. So, yeah, okay. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve account payable warrants, the amount of two hundred and two thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents, and payroll benefit warrants, the amount of seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and five cents for the date ending September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Motion a second to pay the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, we're gonna move to new business for a request from Pioneer Museum to change the focus of the original scope of work in their agreement, C one-one-six-two-two, from printing the Pioneer Storybook to ongoing textile and paper preservation projects. Is there anything you would like to say?
I was just going to add a little bit of insight. I reread their initial application as well as what the scope of work says. It's very vague. It will not require a contract amendment. We're good to go. I feel that that we'll just need to know that they are changing their focus. Very, very concerned about meeting their obligation to what they said they would do, and they're very appreciative of the preservation grant.
And the way I read it is they couldn't get a contractor to be able to do the printing during this calendar cycle. So they're shifting their focus.
Yep. Okay. Or do we, or second, I guess.
I already made the motion.
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
There's a motion a second to approve the request for the Eldritch Creek Pioneer Museum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, you want to do the MOU? Ms. Chairman, we have before us a memorandum of understanding between Clickatuck County and Clickatuck County Cemetery District Number One. This is to provide a community project grant funding not to exceed ten thousand dollars with a five thousand dollar match from the cemetery district. This relates to tree trimming and cemetery maintenance effective September thirteenth through the end of this year, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. My motion is to approve the MOU.
There's a motion, a second to approve the MOU between the county and the county cemetery district number one. All those in favor, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Oh, no. Greg isn't over here. Is he online and am I gonna have to do this?
Hopefully he can just come over here.
I don't see him online.
He was earlier.
Maybe he's en route.
Yeah. Okay, while he's en route, board pending. Gentlemen, do you have anything for the good of the order?
I would report, I did deliver our amendment or our, our response to Republic's amendment. I would say fairly well-received, but they're, they want to play around with the, and give us back something. I did, as far as the CPI, they totally understood that. Something interesting I didn't know is, because I wanted to have a little conversation about what, as we did, it's like, what is, how is the CPI developed? And that the basis of why we feel like we, you know, especially on the tier-three stuff that we needed it is because if they're getting a CPI, then we should be sharing in the same thing. Interestingly, the CPI that is in, I believe, I haven't checked the numbers. Our formula for our CPI is different than theirs with, we get more. We get more. So ours is a higher percentage, our current, our current CPI, like we're projected. Our CPI that's gonna come in is gonna be about seven percent on the current.
See, that was gonna bring up my next question.
So they were talking about, could we, is that something we could?
If we renegotiate this contract and sign before the CPI for the year hits, do we lose out on the seven percent CPI for the year now?
No. And I also, my, and I didn't, I didn't necessarily, I was just speaking for myself, that I found that any amendment would be, it, it would be difficult to amend outside of the budget year, that any, any potential amendment wouldn't take effect until January first. I, and I didn't say, I just said, I mean, seemingly, because we've built twenty-twenty-two on the current system.
So when we're doing the.
On the current system, right.
Negotiation based off the numbers we have.
Right.
Which don't include any potential.
Right.
For this year, which is gonna be up here compared to everything else.
Right.
I want to make sure that, and I got thinking about this the other day and I wanted to bring it up sometime when you did. I want to make sure that they're aware that when we do come back with kind of a final number, ninety to have CPI for this year. And I will lose years of CPI, especially where it's gonna be ninety percent.
Yeah. So anyway, I've not heard anything back and the, we'll hear back as far as what they're.
Is our CPI the same all the way across or is it only on our base and then like different contracts after this?
No, it is, theirs are different. Ours is a flat.
Okay.
It's, it's flat, but it's such a, it's in the book in there. It's such a, I mean, you need an advocate.
It's a, it's very complicated.
And a NASA computer to figure it out.
Right. But it is, it, it consistently is higher than the composite of all of their CPIs in their contracts. It's different. So I don't know. So that's something that'll be a good thing to have them, have our finance first and crunch all that.
That might be different because in the last ten or so years when they made their contracts. Every time I, the last ten or so years that they've had their updated contracts, CPI has been.
Right.
Fairly low.
Right.
Versus what it was then and what it will be this year, so.
So anyway, we'll wait to hear back.
I think when I originally talked to them, their plan was, give us the information so we have a day or two to cram numbers and then we'll get it back to you where you have, I can discuss and then get it back to us. So hopefully we have something very shortly.
Yeah. Oh, that was on Friday, anyway. So I did deliver that on Friday.
Treasurer Gallagher. You walked through the door you want to come up to? You were at the meeting. See, you're already talking. Now you gotta come up and talk in front of the mic.
He can talk next time and I'll stay home. So I'm just here to report on the finance committee meeting. We had a finance committee meeting last week. We're all able to attend. We had some new discussion where some, some of the new business on the agenda was, I did provide a notice to the finance committee that the treasurer's office will be closed on ten-ten, which is Columbus Day. So that is a non-banking day and we're going to take that opportunity to do some training and have kind of an all-hands meeting. So we've notified the title companies and things so that we can do that. It's kind of a, in talking to different folks, I know the PUD does some training on that day as well. Benton County had, kind of was the one I got it from the idea, trying to do, because there's very few opportunities where you can actually have everybody together and go through some things and stuff like that. So we're gonna work on that specifically to talk about REITs. That's something right now, we're getting a lot of different kinds of stuff, and so we want to kind of just all get together and be on the same page.
You're not taking the day off, you're just locking the door to the public and doing.
We're actually gonna come over and get one of the conference rooms upstairs where we can all sit around and, yeah. No, we're not, no, we're not taking the day. We're, we're, we're just not gonna process anything. And it's always a weird day for us because there's no banking that day. There's no transactions. So the banks are closed. Well, we do a lot, it's County Banking Day, so we do do transfers and things like that, but they, they don't happen till the next day and we're not getting any deposits. And so I don't think, we're gonna try it and see. But, yeah, so we're thinking that it will be a good opportunity and, and it's just hard to get, sometimes in the mornings, we can have short meetings or whatever with everybody, but you always feel rushed and then the phone starts ringing and everything else. So we're gonna try that. And then we had, let's see, we went to old business and we talked about, really, not much. We kind of had some discussion about the Douseport wastewater facility because I had had some questions on some of the way the rates were calculated and some of the pieces, we had a conversation about that and the rate increase. And then we went and had a general conversation about the budget and we discussed just different things in regards to where we were at with the landfill. One of the pieces that we did talk about during the meeting is in the last three years, the general fund. the general fund is, I think, fifty two percent of the landfill allocation. So when you look at it overall, we, we had that discussion and so that was a number that came up. So I'm just sharing it with the full complete board. All in the end, you can look it up. It's not anything that's not out there, but we just did talk about that a little bit. It was an interesting, interesting number. And then, uh, there was really no reports from any of the other staff members this time. And the next meeting is, uh, nine twenty three. So, um, it's pretty uneventful, other than just having some general discussion about the the landfill dollars and where they were allocated. Is there any question? Does Jake, would you like to add something or, um, Rob would like to add anything?
I think you did a good job covering it. It was.
So any, not, not finance committee, although I guess there's a tag. What, um, as far as interest rates as far as on investment, are you seeing any movement?
Oh, interest rates have gone up significantly from the beginning of the year. Um, so.
And what impact is that? Not that I'm expecting some.
We're seeing our, I mean, our, our investments are getting, you know, I mean, we were, we were down in the fifteen basis points. Um, and so we are at, I can't remember what they were for September, but, um, well over a percent, which I know that sounds not like a lot, but that's five to seven times more than what it was. So, you know.
I noticed in your budget revenues, you adjusted.
Five to seven times zero is still darn near.
Yeah, it is. It is, but it's still a little bit more.
There's a decimal point in there that is.
Yeah, there's a decimal. But yes, I did, I upped the, um, revenue for the, uh, investment interest, um, because I'm not sure that I see it going back down anytime as quick as it went up. But, you know, I mean, that's always a crystal ball. I mean, we've, you know, we kind of put our best guess out there and sometimes it will go down and some, you don't know what the future is gonna hold. But yes, the, the interest rates that we're getting through the pool, uh, the LGIP are over a percent, which I I know seems small, but when you're comparing to the numbers we've seen in the past.
Right.
They're larger.
I know. I was, I was just kind of curious because I, we had some, personally, some money that I haven't got put somewhere and it's been in just, you know, of one of our old savings account at the bank. And I, you know, I got this, here's your twenty cents. I'm like.
Yes. And and you have to remember that the, you know, the, the LGIP is a liquid pool. So it's not going to, you know, I mean, yes, we're gonna go out and if we had to go out and borrow, we would have to borrow it, you know, I have but I'm assuming they're over five. But the difference is, is that the LGIP has a liquidity factor to it. And so, you know, that's, that's kind of part of the, part of the, the way the rates, you know, and it goes up and comes down. Even the rates are going up over time because you got to remember it goes out so far. So it's going up and when it comes down, it doesn't go down as fast, you know, so it's slowing down. Yeah.
So our, our rate we're paying on our, for this building is quite attractive at this point.
Very attractive. Yes, we did a very good job of getting a pretty reasonable.
Time things really well. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, we did.
Yes.
I have an off topic question. If we're not going to pay off or not sell or not worry about putting an RFP out until after Douseport wastewater next fall, all that research we're doing, I then question why we're doing a payoff this year. Wouldn't just finish the payoff on the next one.
It's actually, it's, it's already done. It was done last.
The payoff is for the Pioneer Center. The, the, the building, the, the, the system was scheduled to be, and we didn't pay it off. That just happened to be where things ended.
Yeah.
So the only piece was.
If that was true, then yeah, that would be something to talk about. What is under there?
It's the cup that I told Gordy fell down. Double sided sticky tape.
Yeah, it's like my, my foot got stuck to something and it was like.
Buildings and grounds and then they can call whoever's in charge of double sided sticky tape.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
See you later, Greg.
I guess it still matters for if it was Pioneer Center, if it was one point five, do we really need to pay the one point eight? Pay one point five and three hundred next year. Is, were we paying it off?
Uh, yes.
Were we paying three hundred and fifty over what we really have to pay?
Yeah, it was a little more than that, but yeah, something like that. I don't remember.
That was coming out this year, I thought, in twenty twenty two. Not twenty twenty three. This isn't going to change. If you push it to next year, then it'll affect your twenty twenty three budget. Okay. All right.
Question for Thursday. There's a sticky note on that page.
All right. Anything else in board pending? Anything else in board pending?
No.
All right. Do you have anything? Thank you. Lee? All right. I would entertain a motion.
Ms. Chairman, I move that we adjourn for the day. We are back at eight oh five on the radio on Thursday and budget hour.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn until eight AM for the radio on Thursday. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much. And thank you to all those who are still on the Zoom meeting, all twenty one of you. Have a wonderful week and I hope you enjoyed the rain.